All right, we will call tonight's meeting to order for Tuesday, October 8th. And as we start out every meeting, read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Olard.
All right. I'm going to go off book just for a second here for the agenda. Obviously, it's been a difficult few couple of weeks for the community at large here. So I wanted to just take a moment, if we could, just to sort of pause in remembrance, a quick moment of silence for Gretchen Sullivan, who's with us for a number of years. And then as well as the loss of Dr. Kelly's son, Daniel, which is all of us's parents unimaginable. So if we could just take a quick moment to just kind of do that before we get going in the meeting, I think that would be a nice gesture. Thank you, Beth. Anyone else, does anything else they want to add in regards to that? Or, okay.
I just would say, it has been a really difficult couple of weeks. Gretchen Sullivan was an employee of ours for 11 years. She started as a preschool assistant and then transitioned to working in developmental math program at H. Olive Day. Very, very dedicated, passionate educator, cared deeply about her students, worked in almost all of our classrooms, was a great colleague with the teachers that she partnered with, and it was a huge loss for staff there. So we appreciate everybody's support and recognition, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with Gretchen and her family. Dr. Kelly had been the system principal here for a number of years. She was here for three years as the assistant principal and director of math and science. She left a couple of years ago to take a position in Norfolk Attleboro. And again, we, our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So moving on to our actual signed agenda. Okay, so we have one gift to vote on, which will be from Norfolk PTO, which is $4,100, which is 10 Camp Bourndale scholarships, obviously for Freeman. So do we have a motion to accept that very generous donation?
I can motion to accept the school gift fund from Norfolk PTO.
Second on that?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you again, Norfolk PTO, much appreciated.
Yes, thank you.
All right. And then, one of the more fun parts of--
Okay, just got a quick logistical question about that.
Yes, you may.
Since Bourndale just happened, will this be used? When will this be used?
I believe they, I would have to double check, but I believe they were awarded this year, and that will reverse the account.
Oh, okay. Excellent, great. Oh, even better.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to one of the more fun things we get to do each year was recognition of a job well done for a couple of different retirees. So this is always kind of a fun thing to do. So we've got two to recognize this evening.
We were able to make it and are here with us tonight.
So they will both be recognized. We first, Mary Carney. And you can tell who wrote this, all the places they went without leaving HOD. You can tell that. So little blur that was put together, it's very nice. I'll flip through this and give a chance to just recognize, obviously, a job well done and much appreciation from all of us. So they, that they're speaking of in leaving the HOD, all the H. Olive Day students who had the good fortune to have Mrs. Mary Carney as their librarian over the past 24 years. Their visits to the library took them places from Vermont with Snowflake Bentley to Scandinavia with Jan Brett's books to the North Pole aboard the Polar Express. They thoroughly enjoyed these trips and acquired a love of literature along the way with Mrs. Carney as their travel guide. Mary has a deep and broad knowledge of children's books, just as important was Mary's knowledge of her students and her colleagues. She knew very well the likes and interests of every child in regards to their literary diets and could find the perfect book for each of them. Beyond that, she knows each student's name and the names of their siblings, as well as remarkably remembering the names of students from many years past. Very impressive skill. Will certainly miss Mrs. Carney's warm and engaging presence in the library. Her name will forever elicit a warm smile and conjure an image of a head of curls and a heart of gold. As she retires, we wish her many happy years with her family, her husband Ray, son and daughter-in-law Danny and Natalie, Annie Apple of her eye, the granddaughter Elena, in Massachusetts, Vermont, and Georgia. So spreading out all kinds of climates. So congratulations, very happy to recognize you.
Paul H. Key, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. I know some of these parents here, this guy. Just like all of the other kids. And Mrs. Champagne's two lovely children. I don't know if I know any of the other children, or the other people's children. Do I?
They know you.
They know you.
They know you.
Oh, okay. All right. If I saw them at other places, they're not with you, I probably would remember them. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Could I give you a hug from Owen?
Yes, you may.
They want to give her a tip.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. He's going to be so happy.
Because every time I, yeah, every time I--
Okay, so just read.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have one, next person we'll move on to is, could not make it this evening, but we certainly wanted to recognize him, that's Paula Serrato. Paula faithfully served the HOD school for 21 years with style, grace, and humor. During those years, her high level of organization and her attention to detail kept the kindergarten classroom she shared with Mrs. O'Shea humming like a well-oiled machine. That attention to detail could be seen in her trademark, her perfectly coiffed hair. In addition to sharing her great organizational skills with her teammates, she also brought a great sense of humor and artistic talents to their collaboration, their classroom, and their teaching. Their students were the beneficiaries of Paula's kind and patient manner. Enthusiastic greetings to her students each morning were often reciprocated with eagerly enthusiastic hugs, always nice to see. Paula's engaging personality will be missed in HOD, but we know that she will now have the time to use her many talents to be home with her family. We wish her many years of completing crossword puzzles containing, creating container gardens and doing whatever else she pleases. So congratulations on the job well done for Paula, should certainly be missed. So I know she's not here, but let's give her-- (applause)
I just wanted to read, Paula sent a note and said, "What a lovely honor from the school committee. However, I'm not able to attend the meeting until October 8th. I really appreciate them thinking of me. It was a pleasure and a joy to work for our school system for so many years. As we all know, our school and town and community are the best."
Very nice. All right. So moving on, two more people. Maureen Alley was here this evening. Was a warm and welcoming president in our kindergarten classroom for 13 years. Prior to that, she served our children in the second grade at the Norfolk Cooperative School. Her low-key style and calm demeanor, probably very helpful among kindergarten kids, helped create an inviting and nurturing learning environment for her young students. It was evident in her individual and small group work with her students. Maureen took great delight in the achievements of her students. As her adult, she was invested in doing whatever it took to make sure they became confident and competent learners, even if it meant adding hours to her already busy day. She modeled the best of social, emotional learning through her own kind and caring words and actions. Maureen was sensitive to the needs of children, adults alike, yet always ready with a witty remark. Mrs. Alley was always behind the scenes preparing materials and setting the stage for successful learning. She was happy to be the person making good things happen, but not in the limelight. As she retires, her HOD school family would like to shine a spotlight on Maureen and her many skills and accomplishments. She'll be greatly missed, but we know her family will be thoroughly enjoying spending more time with her. So congratulations. And then last, but certainly not least, Mary New, she couldn't join us this evening. She began her career as, at the Norfolk Schools nearly 20 years ago, as a per diem substitute and substitute secretary. Within a year, Mary was hired permanently as a special needs aide in the fourth grade, where she remained until 2004. In the fall of 2004, Mary assumed the position of school secretary at the Freeman Centennial School, where she remained the face of the front desk of the Freeman Kennedy School until her retirement in September of 2019. Mary's grace, good humor, and love of children are always evident. She gauged her day-to-day activities at the front desk. She had an uncanny ability to caringly steer a conversation in direction where the other person always came away with a feeling validated and important. She was patient, organized, and had delightful wit. She and Mrs. Curran were a team and the front line for students, parents, teachers, and staff. Mary loved to travel in her spare time, and she and her husband Joe are looking forward to many new adventures together with the family. So congratulations to Mary. All right. So--
Thank you very much for all of your service and for all that you've done for the Norfolk Schools, and thank you for being able to join us tonight.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And more importantly, you guys can go. Stay here. You're more than welcome to though.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Carney.
Thank you, Mrs. Carney.
Leah misses you.
Oh, he does, right.
She misses you in the library.
Oh, right.
Couldn't wait two more years till she was out of there.
(laughing) I was in Leah's class last, I've been doing a little substitute since I saw her.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Grace told me she saw you. She came in like a spy. She said, "I saw her."
Right. She was there. I don't know what the stuff is you're talking about.
You okay?
Well, that's great. All the fun.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. It was good. Ingrid has a lot, so we'll move on to her.
All right. So the first thing on the agenda tonight was, at our last meeting, Jeff, I think you shared a letter from Jerry McDermott, the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office. They are looking to put forward a substance abuse task committee to look at substance abuse, juvenile substance abuse, and issues of mental health. You had asked me to follow up and get a little bit more information, so I did reach out and have a conversation with Greg Casey, who is leading this effort for the Sheriff's Office. Basically, what he explained is that they are looking to evaluate their own programs that they have in place for community outreach, for support for parents and families, that are preventative programs to try to diminish the challenges and the issues of substance abuse among the juvenile risk, at-risk population. They are not currently partnering with the Norfolk DA's office, but they intend to down the road. They're really starting by looking at, this is an information gathering opportunity, to hear from what are the concerns that parents might have, communities might have, school districts might have. And they're looking at this to use that data and the information they gather to refine and strengthen some of their programs, and then again, down the road, hopefully partner with the DA's office in a more comprehensive effort. They have reached out to all of the school committees across the region and are asking districts either appoint a school committee member to serve, or some districts are appointing staff members. Again, they are looking for a broad, diverse group because they want to hear what people's worries are, what your fears are, what issues are out there, what challenges parents are facing, and then some of the programs that districts might have in place. So if there is a school committee member interested in serving, we would love to have somebody join. We do also have some staff that would be willing to participate, that I think could represent the districts. We have the new regional wellness director, Dorothy Pearl, who works with all four of our communities and is focusing on this issue right now, and has been doing a lot of research, looking at what resources are available. We also have our school resource officer and KP, we share the same school resource officer, Michelle Palladini, who is also willing to serve. So if we don't have a committee member that's able to make the commitment, we can elect them as our representatives.
Do we need to ask one of them first before--
They both, they both have expressed willingness.
Oh, okay.
Yes. No, they both expressed willingness to serve on the council.
Thank you, first of all, for having the conversation and looking into it. My recommendation, unless somebody on the committee wants to join, is that we take advantage of the regional resource office. I think that'd be great.
I think that would make the most sense because that person will have the knowledge of really, a pulse on what's going on in terms of families and students and what they need for, you know, whether education or support. So I feel like they would have the most knowledge.
She did a lot of research over the summer. So we, she started with us July 1st, and her summer, the focus of the summer was entry research. So she has interviewed all the mental health providers in the area. She's interviewed all of our staff, all of our clinical staff. She's read the results of the risk survey that the kids take, the Metro West survey. And she's really compiled all that data as to where there are gaps, whether it's in curriculum, whether it's in external resources. So I think she would have a lot to bring to this group.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Do we have to vote on that, or?
We don't. We don't have it as a vote unless, I didn't think there'd be competition--
Okay.
--for the role. Okay. So we're good with it.
It's going to nominate you.
Great, great. Next, by policy, the school committee is responsible for reviewing and approving all fundraising activity. We have several fundraisers to review and approve tonight. First is the Norfolk Special Education Parents Advisory Council runs an annual trunk-or-treat event. It is scheduled for Friday, the 25th of October, and you have a copy of the flyer in your packet. It's a great event. The children really love participating in it, but it is a fundraiser that involves students, so it comes to the committee for review and approval. So we would need a motion to approve the--
I'll make a motion to approve the fifth annual trunk-or-treat event by CPAC.
We'll second that motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Got my ticket.
They got sold out.
It's already happened. We're going to table the next, the next donation. We had an outside agency offer to donate a piano to the H. Olive Day. We need to, as you know, Linda was juggling a lot of things last week with coordinating services, so she didn't have a chance to put together all the information for tonight. So we'll vote on that and bring that to you in November. We have the annual FK and H. Olive Day fundraisers next. You have one for FK. These are all pretty traditional fundraisers. The ones that vary for FK is the sixth grade promotion committee identifies fundraisers for scholarships and for sixth grade promotion costs, field day, things like that. These are, what they've given you is a list of examples of things that they've done in the past, but sometimes those shift depending on who's on the committee. Santa Foundation is an annual event, Read Across America, Jump Rope for Heart. Artsonia is a free program. Laura Mellett came and presented that, and that sort of catalogs and archives student artwork. And then attached behind that, you have the proposed fundraisers for H. Olive Day. Again, PTO spun, some of these are PTO events, sponsorship drive. They do open house bake sales, raffles. In October, we do the Box Tops Friend Directory Collection for UNICEF. They've done a local coupon book, November Kids Night Out trivia. They've done the Providence Bruins food drive, spiritware. December is the Scholastic Book Fairs. They were hoping to do a Disney on Ice event. Again, most of these are traditional. Later on, in February, we have the Box Top Drive, the Coin Wars, March Against Scholastic Book Fair, yearbook sales. We've done Adult Bingo, and the PTO, one of their biggest events has been the Color Fund Run that they do in June, which has been a big fundraiser. So there's a few others listed here, I didn't read them all, but give you a general sense.
Do we have a motion to accept those proposed fundraisers?
I'll make a motion to accept the fundraisers as stated.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I've particularly enjoyed Artsonia.
I love Artsonia. A lot of people really like that.
Oh, my goodness. I didn't realize it was a PTO fundraiser.
I didn't. I don't think I remember that. My mother has some of my kids' art.
Oh, that's the annual holiday gifts.
We get the note cards, so that when the kids have to send thank you notes and things like that, it's really cute.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, it's really nice.
It's great.
So that was the FK and most of the PTO fundraisers, and then you also have some--
I don't think we actually voted.
We did. Sorry.
No. All in favor? For the record, all in favor? All right.
You have some additional fundraisers that H. Olive Day runs annually. They do a food drive at Thanksgiving for the food pantry. They do a holiday carrying and sharing, a hat and mitten tree collection. They do a food drive for the food pantry around the 100th day of school. They do a Read Across America basket raffle with the NTA. They have typically participated in the Rally Against Cancer for opening day at Fenway Park. And then this year, they will be doing some, something staff will be collecting to create some sort of a memorial for Gretchen Sullivan. And they haven't determined what that will be yet, but will be anticipating doing something in the future. They also have Artsonia and Jump Rope for Heart. Questions on the H. Olive Day fundraisers?
All right. So motion on the HOD fundraisers?
I'll make a motion to accept the HOD fundraisers.
Second?
Second.
We'll vote this time, all in favor? Aye.
The next is just an informational item. We have talked at the school committee, and last year, I think it was around January, February, Flansburgh Architects came to present the potential design for expansion to the Freeman Kennedy School. On October 29th, I will be presenting to the board of selectmen the, a variety of different things. First, we have, I've got the director of the NASDAQ organization who did our enrollment projection studies. He's going to come and present an updated enrollment forecast, and is also going to include some projections based on the approved 40B projects that are coming in and the ones that are currently pending. So we'll start the night with Don Kennedy from NASDAQ giving an overview of the forecast for enrollment and student enrollment and growth in Norfolk, and also addressing some of the pending questions with the impact of the 40B development on student enrollment. After that, I will be presenting the work that the space study committee did, looking at the various options for how we would accommodate this growth. We did look at the potential of having an early childhood site and creating a preschool and an early childhood site. That option didn't solve all of our needs. It might create space at the H. Olive Day, but it didn't address the expansion issue at Freeman Kennedy. We looked at mobile classrooms, or renting or leasing portable classrooms. There's challenges with that. We don't have space at H. Olive Day to house those. And even if we were to do that at Freeman Kennedy, there's a really significant cost just for site work, to bring electricity, power, septic, portable water out. So there's almost $1 million in just site work, and then your leasing equipment. The lease rates are very high for, if we were to lease 10 classrooms, you'd be looking at $3 million for a five-year lease. So you've got $4 million in, and you have an issue in four or five years. So that didn't work. So we felt the FK expansion design is the best. It provides space at the H. Olive Day by moving the preschool up and relocating special ed offices, and it also gives us the additional nine classrooms upstairs. It also meets a need that the town has for an emergency shelter. In that design, we're able to add showers, and you'd have a site that would have showers and a kitchen if there was an emergency within the district. So we'll be presenting that. After I present the space study work, Bill Beatrice from Flansburgh Architects will be there to present their preliminary designs and recommendations. And then our business manager and the town finance director will present potential costs and how, different options for how that could be funded. It's an informational night. We're not looking for a vote on anything, we're just sharing the information out with the select board. So I wanted to let the committee know, in case anybody is interested in attending. I think some of our administrators will be there that night as well. And I will share the presentation out with everybody as well. Any questions on that, or?
Nope.
Okay. Included in your packet is just an update from the BIKO Collaborative. Again, we're members of the BIKO Collaborative, and they send us quarterly information. BIKO is in a great position this year. We did open an additional elementary therapeutic program at that Summit Academy, which was new space they acquired last year. That program continues to grow. I think with all of the different member districts, that's the population that we're seeing the largest increase in programming needs. They had, BIKO's enrollments gone up. They had 234 students enrolled. That's the highest that BIKO has been since it started, or since they started collecting the data back in 2011. So the Collaboratives in great financial health, they opened this year with 208 students. We take in ongoing enrollment throughout the year, so we'll probably meet or exceed that peak from the close of school last year. They have a strategic plan in place. They've been working really hard on looking at whether or not, there's several other towns that have approached the BIKO Board to become members of the Collaborative. We're really looking at, can we accommodate additional districts in the Collaborative and continue to serve the member districts? So that'll be a focus for this year. Any questions on that?
I'm just curious, how many districts are part of the BIKO program?
There's 13. Yep. But we have two pending districts that are interested in joining. And then the last is just, we have the joint conference for MASC and MASSS. I know Midora is planning to be our voting delegate on Friday. If anyone else is interested in attending, Pam included the full, the full conference agenda, so you can see what workshops and things are being offered.
I wish I could go. It looks really good.
They have some great, they do have some great speakers this year. So if anybody's interested, just email Pam and she can register you for that. I think--
For me.
My own choices. Thank you.
Virtual reality one. Social skills.
You want me to go to a social skills workshop? Thanks, Jen.
I came out wrong. That's all I have for tonight, so we can go into committee reports.
All right. Moving on to King Philip.
So we met last night. Mr. Zinni shared Boston Magazine's ranking of top schools, and KP came in at 59 of 159, so that was positive. Reviewed MCAS results, which were fair, they were fairly, I think there are goals to be set to improve those, I would say. And we changed, we reviewed the public speak and changed it to public comment. I was really happy about that. And then, Mr. Azar gave a budget update, and I think there was, we were on target with budget, and we had like half a million to revert back to E and D, so, and that was it.
Half a million year-to-date?
Ah, well, I think the fiscal just closed, if I understood correctly.
Oh, they're just closing FY--
That probably was the end of the year budget update of what they were able to put into my--
Yeah, that's what it was, if I understood.
--to close the school.
It was a long presentation. Meeting, yeah. Ended at 9:25.
One more poll had a question on your board. All right. Moving on to policy.
I'm reporting tonight. So we looked at three different policies, we reviewed them. The heavy one was the public comment at school committee meetings. We made some final revisions, especially with legal counsel. Our own legal counsel made some suggestions. Should I go into the details on the suggestions, or just the highlights?
We can review that when we bring it forward for the first meeting.
Okay. So he came up with some pretty specific suggestions for us. So we're going to put those suggestions in from the attorney, and then we'll present it for the next, put it on the agenda for the next meeting. This is public comment at school committee meetings, yeah. He had some pretty interesting--
Public speak.
Nope. Public comment. It is public comment.
Good.
We've adapted that.
And the districts are now in alignment, at least, we're in alignment with that school.
Yeah. He had some good comments, suggestions, like having time boundaries during public comment, you know, making sure that comments can, they can be off the agenda, but as long as they're within the scope of our authority of school committee. So there's some details in there that we can go over next time. The second policy that we looked at was student--
I'll add one thing with that is, I think we'd like to get that fast-tracked if we could, so we're going to recommend we bring that forward to, for the first reading, that we skip the other readings and just vote to adopt the policy for public comment.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. In the second policy we looked at, we reviewed with student travel, and we would like to just supplement it with the mask policy that's recommended. So, it would now be, right now, student travel is J.J.H., and we would supplement it for a little bit more detail with the mask policy, and it would now be J.J.H.R. And that will be put to vote or review?
That would be a first reading, the supplement.
Okay. For our next agenda. And the last policy we looked at was public solicitation in the schools, and we went through and did some editing to make sure that it aligned with mask, and that will be a first reading as well. And that's it.
So, we have two votes for the communicable diseases and inoculations of students, is that correct?
And these are both incidental changes. They are, we modified them to align with the new mask model policies, but we also, in communicable diseases, we made the language consistent with the terms used by law. So, instead of handicapped children, it now says students with disabilities protected under the law. And under communicable diseases, the prior policy listed examples of short-term and acute life-threatening diseases such as acquired immune deficiency syndrome. That language has been removed from the policy. Those are the only two, yeah, it's unnecessary. And then, the last change is on the back page of that is, it's around student privacy and that the determination of who information will be shared with will be made by the student attendant in consultation with the school nurse. We added the school nurse.
Makes sense.
All right, so do we have a motion to accept the changes as noted in policy JLCC, communicable diseases?
I make a motion to accept the changes as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second policy that, again, just incidental changes, and we, again, went with the mask model policy language, is for inoculations of students. So, we require students entering school for the first time, whether it's coming in at kindergarten, or transferring from another district, or returning after being homeschooled, to present physician certificate attesting to immunization against communicable diseases. In the past, we've defined what those required immunizations are. The Department of Public Health is now saying that we should just limit the policy to saying as specified by, from time to time, by the Department of Public Health, because they sometimes add and require an additional booster for a shot, or they eliminate something. And again, that's really the, primarily the only change, is that we took out, we took out the language that defines which be three doses of HIV, and we also took out the language at the bottom that says, "Any pupils who have not made arrangements and have been given at least two weeks' written notice shall be excluded from school without, until the doctor's signature's been provided." We do follow up, and we do in practice enforce that, but we legally can't, you know, give a two-week notice and do that. We can, if there is an outbreak of chickenpox or something, exclude children that have been vaccinated, but we can't, or we don't enforce that, we don't allow children to attend. We require the immunizations, but we don't do the two-week notice.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to accept the changes to policy JLCB, inoculation of students?
So moved.
I'll second that.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moving on here, we have.
New items.
School partner application. This is for the Community Supper that is done at The Grange, and this is a new one, right?
Yes.
So, I'll just go through the blurb real quick for the benefit of everyone. Founded in the fall of 2017, the Community Supper is a Norfolk-based volunteer initiative that assists less fortunate residents with food supplies, warm clothes, shoes, heating oil, financial assistance, and other necessities. So, as far as how it matches up with us, some of Norfolk's focus on enriching our children through comprehensive educational programs, caring social engagement, and selfless teaching of kindness. Community Supper program serves to complement those same lifelong compassionate teachings while nourishing the lives of those students and their families who could use some food and financial assistance. And I just accidentally blinked out of it, so bear with me. Hold on, back in. Technology's my friend. And then, they meet basically twice a month, the first and third, Thursday of the month at The Grange. It's six or seven 30 p.m. I know I see a fair amount of the things on Facebook and imagine other social media sites, so that's my knowledge of them. So, I guess first, if we have a motion to accept them as a partner, and then we can discuss beyond that. Anyone want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now we discuss.
So, one thing that I would just remind the committee, typically, school partners, our criteria is that they have a close and significant educational benefit for the students in Norfolk, and that they're engaged throughout the course of the year. We do allow per policy, what some people that have come and requested partnership of the school committee are really looking to be able to publish information and raise public awareness about events that they're hosting. We do allow nonprofit community organizations to send information out with my approval. Typically, unless it's an event that is, you know, a wine tasting, or alcohol, or something like that, we do allow those to be sent home with students and sent through the email.
Just to be clear, those are not partners.
They're not partners. Nonprofit organizations that want to advertise a community event, we do allow per policy. So, they, in some cases, we have people file an application seeking that benefit, and that's all they're really seeking, and they don't require a partnership to access that. There's been times that the committee has asked me to go back and check with people if they're really seeking partnership, or if that's, purpose can be meant in a different way. I'm happy to do that in this case, if you want more information on this, if you.
Sounds reasonable.
Am I correct, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are not partners?
They're not, because again, they don't have a close and exclusive educational benefit. There are other benefits that our school partners have in terms of space rental, facilities use. So, sometimes people, people are looking for that full partnership, and other times people are just looking for, to be able to advertise information.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that, you know, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and even this, definitely offer the opportunity for children to learn about very important behaviors and giving back to the community in different ways. I don't see this, how this really ties in tightly into some of the guidelines that we have.
I'm happy to go back and talk to them about whether they're really seeking true partnership or they're really seeking just access to being able to. I think what the, I think in reading the application, they want to make sure that the community is aware that this service exists.
There's a resource on there.
To be able to post on the website and just send information home, which, if that's really the goal, we can achieve that in another way. So, if you want to table this, I'm happy to get further information and then.
I think that makes the most sense.
Absolutely.
I would agree.
So, strike my request for vote.
I'll follow up on that tomorrow.
All right, so check on that one. Okay. We do need both a motion and a vote for the minutes from our September 9th meeting. So, we have motion to accept the meeting minutes from September 9th.
Make a motion to accept the meetings from September 9, 2019.
Second.
So, we know further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, we are scheduled for November 12th. Is that okay for everyone?
Yeah. Come back with all the feedback from the country. It's gonna be awesome. I'd love to spend my birthday with Oliver on November 12th. Tell Jen about the social skills workshop. It's really good. Really cool.
I was too shy to go. Couldn't go. Bring myself.
I would go if I could.
All fine.
I'm in.
Yep.
All right, so, this will end the actual meeting. We are going to go into executive session, so we're gonna need a motion to move to go into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto and not to reconvene in the open session. This is where we have to give our names, so it's a roll call vote.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Does someone have to second your motion?
Probably. So, someone probably.
I'll second your motion. Or did anybody actually move?
Um, I think I sort of did.
Okay.
Well, someone said so moved, then someone said second.
So moved.
And then, okay, there we go.
Done.
And now, we'll start with.
Roll call, Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Carter.
Paul Cockroft. Tom Swell. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Smooth.